Good afternoon. Guam Community College Board of Trustees Monthly Meeting Wednesday, September 13th, 2020, 12:00 PM. As we begin, we have a real call.
Brian Carliola.
Here.
Carlo Leon Guero.
Here.
Richard Sablon.
Here.
Rose Greenow, She's off island. Gina Robbins. Yolanda Fardana, here. Kelly Tyngley.
Here.
We have a quarantine. Dr. Mary Alcada, here. Kenneth Bautista.
Here.
Mon Wong Jer, here. Attorney Ronald Montelone.
Here.
That's it.
The recital of the mission statement. Guam Community College is just a leader in career and technical work of course of public. Applying the highest quality student-centered education. I'm not treating her right now. The approval of the minutes, can I get someone to motion? So move, Mr. Chair, can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, let's do a quick review. Are there any changes that need to be made? There are no objections. Minutes are approved. Communication.
I did not have any communications to report, but I would just like to present to the board for the record the list of all the meetings that the chairman and I will have with our officials in Washington DC. Starting next week, we will have meetings with the Association Committee College Trustees for the regional training. And that this is going to be in collaboration with Northern Naranis College, because they've also requested. We're also going to be meeting with Deputy Administrator for USDA, Disaster Recovery Project Department of Education, and so this relates to nursing. HERSA, we're meeting with the Associate Administrator for HERSA, Department of Education, Hydrogen and Fuel Cell Technologies Office, and American Association for Community Colleges Senior Vice President, and the President from QEM, which is a third party that submits grant proposals to the National Science Foundation. And so we're entering into agreement with QEM for a potential project here on campus or with our college.
Any questions on any of the acronyms, HERSA, QEM?
HERSA is Health Resources and Services Administration.
Yeah, tons, tons here.
So just to include that as part of the communication.
Okay, thank you. Good job.
Yes, thank you.
Public discussion.
No requests for public discussion.
Thank you. Let's move on to reports, the president's report.
Okay, starting out with the finances of the college. We have received to date a total of $21,519,358. $15,081,000 from the general fund. $353,000 for the 22% general plan. $78,500 for the scholarship office. $5.5 million for the media. Post, $72,000 for post, the CIP repayment of $200,400. And then the first generation trust, which will now sunset, this is the last year, for $200,000. And so based on the appropriation schedule, we are at 96%.
Amazing.
And so we're ending the fiscal year. The budget bill for 2024 has lapsed into law. And the college has received its requested amount. And there's a little bit additional funding that's identified. And so we're going to be in good shape for 2024 with a lot of additional projects coming online. In addition to that, we also have... Did you have a question? In addition to that, we did launch the scholarship office and we have been receiving a lot of inquiries regarding that the Guichi PSEC program, we will collect applications this year and for scholarship opportunities into five healthcare career fields that were approved by the board. And there's a lot of increase coming in now, not only for student applications, but also John and his office are working with the donors to get some donations into the scholarship.
Sure.
The lifecycle engineering has completed their advanced learning training for chemistry. So we will be seeing that completion ceremony soon.
How many people joined?
I believe there's 13. But Denise has scheduled bootcamp completions for September, October, November, the summer. Already lined up. And so there'll be a lot of completion ceremonies coming up that we will all notify you on that. We are also working on, there is a funding opportunity right now for PBEC member institutions to participate in a two-day training with UH Manoa from Department of Energy and about cybersecurity and energy security emergency response. So our CITO, Chief Information Technology Office, Adrian Attallah, will be attending that on our behalf. So that, Denise is also going to follow up on discussions with our partnership with UH ONGORX, which is the internet exchange that allows for any email traffic dot edu to be at a much faster speed than what is currently being routed from here to stateside and back. So it's a ring that allows for... The dot edu is considered a research component, so it gives, there's a lot of research that happens between and among educational institutions. And so that opens up the bandwidth for us.
What do you call it?
ONGORX. And so it's an acronym, G-O-R-X. It's a research exchange.
Oh, yeah.
And so we've had the equipment set up for some time, but now it allows us to enter into that space with UH as well. So now that we've completed the multi-purpose auditorium, we are getting innovated with a lot of requests for the use of that training space, but we're really wanting to use it to amplify educational programs here on campus. And I think bringing the community to the campus is going to provide broader recognition of what we do here in terms of educational opportunities. So there's a lot going on in terms of that piece. Building 300 is going through its final air conditioning commissioning, and which is all connected to the LEED certification, which is the energy efficiency of that component. As you're aware, we did finish the 13 paramedic completers, and we are now working on developing the next cohort for paramedics. So there is still a lot of interest through our campus with that. Cybersecurity is on its way in terms of updating the curriculum, and so that should be coming through the CRC fairly quickly. And the courses should start to be offered.
What do you think this is required?
So we have three courses that are currently being developed. So what we are working on right now is we have a computer science track that leads to a two plus two at the university. And so the computer science now is identifying another computer science cybersecurity track as a separate specialty so that, because there's a lot of interest in that particular area.
This is good.
Yeah. And then we're working with the front office on reprogramming, reprogramming some of the ESF funding so that we can extend the literacy navigator project through 2024. And so we're looking at potentially hosting even a literacy conference to help support students. And this has really taken off quite well in terms of the reach into the community, including possibly a, like a mobile lab, a mobile literacy project that we go into the villages and help to support the libraries, libraries in the villages as well. So the other thing is after a conversation with the chairman, so we will be bringing on a capital improvement project coordinator to help with the facility projects. We have several other projects ongoing, so we need some help in that regard. And then as the CIP administrator comes on, we will also be, there's a lot of grant opportunities that will help us expand programs. And so we're going to be allocating a little bit of our time when we start to grant writing.
So this person is also going to be writing grants?
No, so what it does is because Dr. Julie right now, Dr. Julie oversees filing and development, the institutional strategic master plan, all the CIP projects and facilities and maintenance and sustainability, so that'll help relieve her a little bit of the CIP direct oversight and give her an opportunity to expand and help support the strategic master plan. Yeah, and that, and she's a good grant writer as well, so she'll help facilitate that. And right now she's overseeing the adult-based education grid. So that's actually a really good change for us, so that we can focus on a lot of other activities that are coming up. And that's all I have.
How about FEMA?
FEMA is ongoing. We've submitted for FEMA, we've been submitting requisitions and processing through, and we are following through with our insurance as well. So we've already submitted our request by the deadline, and so now we're just going through the replacement and repairs of all of those particular areas.
Can I generate some income that she asked?
Oh, that's a different project.
Oh, different?
The other FEMA project is... Yeah, that's the insurance project. The other FEMA project is just, I'm just waiting for their final decision. 80% of the foundation building will be leased to FEMA for administrative purposes. So we're looking on generating some revenue for that place.
That's good.
And of course, with the ribbon cutting and FEMA here, FEMA did announce the additional $1.6 million for the next renovation for Building 600. Bonnie has submitted, I think, the concept or the notice of intent to apply for another FEMA grant for building 500, which was due a couple days ago. So that's already ongoing, and the design is currently on its way or with our architects for both 500 and 600 renovation. So lots to do. That's my report so far, until we get to CA.
What about grant requests for 500? Six of you also put all the important?
No.
No.
But so like, for example, carpentry right now is 600, and we just got, we got a lot of materials from Department of Interior. We got a grant from Department of Interior to support some of the bootcamps. And so that brings in some equipment. And then we just got the truck driving, so now that bootcamp, I mean, that funding from DOI will also fund a truck for the boot, for the truck driving bootcamp. And there's some other collateral in there. With the facility maintenance DOI grant, they did apply for and receive funding for a lot of the lifts or the maintenance control over the campus. That's it.
Thank you. A capital improvement projects.
Oh, no, trustee first.
I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. Monty, activity reports.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. One of the things in your packet is accreditation. Dr. Gina is not available to be here today, but this is an update on the accreditation. The committees have been formed already, including faculty, staff, and administrators. Standards one and two have already met. Standards three and four are tomorrow, so they'll have their lunch meeting tomorrow. And they have a calendar that takes us to the final report that will be submitted when we submit our final document to the GCCJC. So our intent is to have the final report completed by April. April 2024. And we will submit in May. It's due in August, but because of the summer months, and it has to be approved and vetted through the governance and participatory governance process. And it's summer months that this is a celebrating online process. So that's it.
When is the actual visit?
March of 2025. Yes. I believe we already have the week, the week of March, or is this the actual visit?
Is it going to come fast? Yeah. Yeah. Okay, Kelly?
So I'm thirsty, August 31st. I attended the Building 300 and K-10 cutting. And then on Tuesday, September 5th, registration for the NCTU student conference is not open. And flyers that we posted on social media and the myDCC. The NCTU conference, the student conference is scheduled for Friday, September 29th, 8:30 to 2:30 at the Holiday Resort. The presentation topics include decolonization, opportunities for community mobilization, financing your future, communication for effective leadership and teamwork, time management, tips for academic success, managing stress, self-care strategies, personal discovery and career exploration, wellness support of the counseling services. And then for Friday, September 8th, at 12:00 PM, Student Organ, at Building 300, the NPA. At 12:00 PM, we have our, we had a student organization officer and advisor introduction ceremony. We also had a training, and we had over 100 attendees and engaging active student organization for this event here. And then 2 o'clock, we had our first copse general membership meeting. And on Thursday, September 14th, at 3:00 PM, E117, I will be attending a presentation organized by the Criminal Justice Student Organization. The FBI agents will be presenting on becoming an FBI agent and gaming trafficking. And then on Tuesday, September 19th, 11:00 AM until sellout in front of the Allen Health Center, the Practical Nursing Student Association will be reporting at the Excel.
You're not busy yet. Good job. Thank you. Simone?
How are you, everybody? Last time I recorded on, right before the semester started, and we were talking about the 10-minute benchmark for students, which was a big change in our, in our agreement, our faculty agreement. And so we kind of are finally catching our breath with workloads, settling all of that. And we still had to close some classes, and so I have spoken with Dr. Gina and plan to meet with DCs and faculty senate, which is now also part of the agreement, to sort of see what we need to do to hit that intent of not closing classes and what can be done. And so that's an ongoing conversation. We're also seeing the importance of bringing that sort of to adjunct and how that, how adjunct, because they're not covered under the agreement. So how we can sort of pull over what works into the adjunct courses as well, classes as well. The NPA also attended, it's very beautiful, feels like a hotel, it's very nice. Faculty that I was talking to, they're excited. I know that you mentioned the cardboard challenge, and I spoke to Missy, the faculty member who does it, and she said, "I can't bring kids in here, it's too nice." So we are looking at holding our, this semester for the first time, we're hoping. Although the date we're looking at in November is already filled, so I'm hoping here that we'll be sort of finding ways to have our educational programs make sure we get in. I'm sure everybody wants to get in there. We're looking at this semester, this is our only semester that will have all four of our turn-on cohorts on campus. Our first cohort will be done next semester, and our last cohort is starting. And so we wanted to have a sort of children's part of all lecture board. So they'll be showcasing what they've been doing, and we're hoping to have them around and see children come as a field trip and do interactive storytelling, that's my class. Performance history is another one of our classes, and immersion methods, and then reading and writing. So it's going to be a different kind of event than we've ever, that we've ever had, maybe. It should all be in tomorrow and everything set up for the little, the kids at speech one, where like the most programs. So we're looking at dates now, but I appreciate hearing that, you know, findings.
The cardboard challenges already voted.
Did they?
Yeah, they voted.
Yeah, we looked at the, well, I said, you know, you got your invitation, I heard you, they said cardboard challenge, Dr. Mary said that, so. So you gotta do it here, Missy. So we were looking at November 22nd, the Page Your Way Open House is already there. So I know there's already some good student events scheduled in for that. Just to, you know, accreditation, faculty are joining those committees and looking forward to it. Such a good way to get institutional knowledge and learn. Last accreditation, I was the chair of those committees, and it definitely helps in terms of understanding processes and what, how GCC votes, it's a big picture stuff, so looking forward to that. I attended the Naranis History Conference in Saikan on Labor Day weekend.
Which conference?
Naranis History Conference. Yeah, it was great. It was, you know, seeing some of the students. I'm also part of the, my creation studies master program at EOG right now. So I kind of attended as a student, I didn't present anything, decided to just go and enjoy the conference. But that was really interesting, and a lot of good connections, especially since our program is starting here and looking to make connections with other people invested in the region, history and education.
Was it at NMI College that you stayed?
It was at the Fiesta, it was the Fiesta, what is it, Crowe?
Crowe.
Yes.
How's their college coming along? Did you get a chance to drive by?
I did not, actually.
Is it, is it back open room? Actually, rebuilding or anything?
Yeah, they just worked around their student center, and they have several of the buildings.
They did, a lot of the teachers in our program are from Saikan, the few from Tien, so we did sort of talk to Humanities Council out there. There's different ideas for how we can broaden the program and make connections and get places. We have a good opportunity coming up, given I've been collecting stories, and so from the, one of their projects in my class. And so hoping in the future to publish an apology of the teachers' work that are, that are student stories, but all together. So, so, you know, just fun, fun stuff, but the Naranis History Conference is really strong. And then just as a last note, we've already established training for the agreement. We started with the Ambassador and Right Committee because they have the most deadlines, starting early. And we have our plan for doing the training this semester and then moving to next semester on the agreement part, so that's what we're doing as well.
Great. Okay, great. Thank you. Ken?
Yeah, so we just, of course, I was just running the whole semester, and that's pretty much all we do.
It's busy, there's no market outside?
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you. A Board of Trustees, Community Outreach Report, does anybody have anything to report?
Was able to attend the daycare bootcamp award ceremony, graduation ceremony, and all skin, MBA, every kind of ceremony. Kudos to TRMA and the GCC team. The MBA is an amazing new structure to be enjoyed by all. It really is a phenomenal place to be walking. Kudos.
And I also attended the MBA ribbon cutting, so I want to echo Carlo's sentiments. That was, that is really just a spectacular facility. Very nice.
So I attended, yeah, I attended the Student Center Academy ribbon cutting. I also attended the ethics training, which was just last Friday. And then I did my onboarding with President Alcada on the 24th.
Okay, thank you. And finish business.
Starting with, yeah, starting with the Worldist Center. So after our meeting with USDA next week, we should be able to finalize the application for that project.
Yeah, I'm working on that.
Building B. Building B right now is at 48, almost 50% complete, and they're moving along. We do anticipate a extension, time extension. But, you know, there's, there's been a lot happening in terms of, you know, the type of these stuff, so we're just waiting for that extension to come in.
Anything else regarding this project?
No, no issues. In terms of the Workforce Development Center, we are waiting for the final, we're updating appraisal now from Cornerstone and just finalizing some details on the discrepancy of the property deed. And then we should be setting that out to bid. I think we're going to send it out to bid fairly quickly, right as the day of the school year goes out. So the documents and everything are ready, so.
Any issues with the, with the deed, I mean, any major issue, or is it?
We will council with you if you'd like, we just need to fix something.
Okay, okay.
And then the culinary arts, oh no, yeah, culinary arts is 4% complete. DDW did request for the Guam Tropical Energy Code design plans. And so my understanding is that with this submission, that they should be able to give the building permit. So that should be, they're already starting to clear out the...
Guam Tropical?
Yeah, so there's a requirement for Guam Tropical Energy Code, GTEC, which is a requirement. So anyway, my understanding has been submitted, and they're starting to do demolition inside the culinary arts already. So just based on our timeline right now, the completion date is June 12th, 2024. The equipment already has been awarded for that building, because we need a lot of lead time. So the equipment is, has already been awarded for that project, so that's good. And then just connected to culinary and baking, the culinary team is actually really excited because they now have an opportunity to submit for a food truck. So we're hoping to do an educational culinary food truck. And, you know, this was something that was brought up many, many years ago when the teams were off in competition, high school teams. So anyways, I asked him who are, if they would be interested in it. In our discussion with TRMA, they will do the design. So we're looking forward to having a GCC food truck at some... So it's going to be our mobile culinary learning lab, I think, is what we're paying for. So that's an exciting project for them as well. The Building 2000 generator is currently at... I'll find it, I guess it's here. The 2000 is at 75% complete, so they have a scheduled concrete form for today, so it's almost done. 75%, the generators are in here. And that's where we are in terms of construction. And of course, we'll start adding on, the conceptual design for Building 5 and 600 was initially presented to us by TRMA, and so Dean Calar is now going to be working with the construction and automotive faculty in that space, for that space.
Yeah, Dr. Cal, you know, with all of our expansion, you know, we need to take a look at what the impact is going to be on power. So I think this team that we have on there, right, you're talking about extending the area where cooking and baking and stuff and that stuff generates all that.
The other thing we're going to need to look at real quickly is going to be the parking garage. Because parking is going to start to become an issue, especially if we start to let out. So we have to be very careful about allowing folks to use the MBA during peak times. Saturdays, Friday Saturdays, or Sundays is not an issue, but Monday through Thursday at certain times, there's no parking around campus.
Which parking garage, because I don't think, which would you recommend to start with?
We would, we'll talk to the architects on that, because there is one parking structure, I believe, where shooting range is on the bottom, so that might be a consideration. It's in a close shooting range for that, so we'll see how that, we may be able to get funding for the shooting range.
Yeah, because, you know, the public, they closed down. I think the only public one now, so we're getting a lot of traffic here.
Yeah, well, for law enforcement. Yeah, we don't put them into the public. And I did the accreditation updates early on, so.
Okay, any new business?
I do not have any new business to present at this time.
All right, good question to go into the next session. Hi, so. We'll get to exactly the session.